Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju wache ya kwe kwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. You may notice that I'm sporting my Kingston Frontenacs jersey tonight, cheering on the Eastern Conference Champions as they head into the playoff season, so certainly I know that the whole community is behind them and we're expecting great things. Just also to let you know, for those of you that came into council chambers and you saw the, of course, the special jerseys that were worn by the Frontenacs at their last home game, so those jerseys are now up for bid, so you can make your bid if you want to take one of those home with you, you can visit facebook.com/kingstonfrontenacs. And 100% of the proceeds will go to The United Way, and the bidding closes on March the 26th. Okay, so, we, council was in committee the whole closed meeting, we discussed one item related to the amendments to the Ombudsman Act affecting the municipality. Next, I will ask for an approval of the added, we have an additional motion of condolence, we have a withdrawal of a report. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner. Still one person to vote, and that carries. I did forget that we have to, I need a motion to rise from closed meeting without reporting, so we'll just go back and do that, so moved by, oh, you guys have that, right? Go, take it away.
Moved by councillor Ossanik, seconded by councillor Allen, the council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Wow, okay, councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mary Patterson, I Liz Shell. Council meeting 2016-11, March 22nd, I Liz Shell of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of new motion one as my daughter-in-law is a pharmacist. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. I Jeff McLaren of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause number one, report number 37, in that there's a possibility that this bylaw may cost my company money.
Councillor Ossanik.
Thank you. I Lisa Ossanik of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of new motion number one, discussing National Universal Pharmicare, in that I am employed by the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, which establishes and implements policies regarding drug programme funding in Ontario.
Councillor Camden.
Thank you. I Adam Camden of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause two, report number 36, as my spouse is an employee at Homebase Housing.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, I Ryan Bull of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause A, report number 35, as an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a pecuniary interest in this matter. Thank you.
I Peter Stroud of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of new motion one on Universal Pharmicare, as I am an RN who administer medications.
Anybody else? Okay, so with that, we will move to delegations. We have three delegations listed on the agenda. First, we have David McDonald, coordinator for the Water Access Group, who will appear before council to speak to clause one, report number 40, received from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee with respect to the waterfront master plan. And just a note to all of our delegations that you have five minutes. Mr. McDonald.
My name's David McDonald, and as mentioned, I'm the coordinator of the Water Access Group, which is a fairly loose coalition of groups in town interested in a variety of ways in our waterfront, recreational, cultural, health-wise, et cetera. And I'm going to speak to you briefly about the waterfront proposal, and I have two things to say, but before I do that, I'll just say I'm very excited, this has been a long time coming. For me personally, it's been about eight years of pushing for a comprehensive coherent waterfront plan, but it's also been 350 years of European settlement in this city before we finally had a vision for our waterfront, so this is actually, I think, quite a momentous occasion. My first point is that we have a plan which I think is excellent, and one that you should endorse and embrace. We had a fantastic team of consultants that put this thing together, along with phenomenal staff support, and I did sit on a committee, as one community member amongst many, that also contributed to this, and I feel quite proud about the product that's come out. It's also been extremely consultative, there were close to a dozen meetings with hundreds of people in attendance in total, lots of online consultation, and the consultants also took into account previous past activity and activism around the waterfront, so I think it really captures a wide swath of opinion, and it really generated an enormous amount of attention from a broad cross-section of people in Kingston, and I feel quite confident that this is broadly representative of what the people in this city want. And in fact, I've never worked on an issue where there was such broad consensus and excitement about something, so it's been a real pleasure for me to work where everybody has a common vision. Most importantly, I think the plan is concrete, quite literally in places, and doable. 138 separate projects, site-specific, and about connectivity of our waterfront, and I think we've got something with the priority matrix and the consultation which makes a lot of sense in terms of the way it's going to roll out and the kinds of things it's going to offer people. And I think there's really something here for everybody. No single plan can get everything right, but I think across the city and across the spectrum of interests, this plan has done a fantastic job of providing something for everybody. But it's not just the concrete ideas, it's the principles of this plan which I think are very important, and it's about recreation, it's about culture, it's about spirituality, and the kind of recognizing the indigenous history of this area and the water and the land that we are on. It's about public health, and most importantly in my mind, it's about publicness and re-embracing and re-engaging with the single most important public asset we have in this city, which is our water and our waterfront. So I would encourage you to vote in favour of this and to embrace it. My second point is about challenges, and there's two sub-points here. The first one is that the budget, in my opinion, although $62, $64 million is nothing to sneeze at, over a 30-year period, we can do better. We should be accelerating the pace at which we implement these projects, there are some issues that will hold up things around planning, we can't do everything at once, obviously, but the 30-year period is a very, very quick one, sorry, a very long one over the amount of money that we've got available, and I think we need to think seriously about how we can accelerate the spending on this very, very important project. And secondly, I think we need to make this a living document, we can't let this, as we have with many other site-specific proposals about the waterfront, let it sit and gather dust. And we have a responsibility as community members, and as council members, and as staff to do these things, so I would encourage you to think about what you can do in your district to raise awareness, get people engaging with the waterfront again, make this document something that means something to people. And this is where I think rolling out the document faster, rolling out the plans, will really get people excited. Why do we need to wait 10 years for some of these things to happen, when in reality they could be happening much quicker than that? So we're going to be watching as community groups, we've got this sort of loose coalition called Eyes on the Water, we're going to be watching and making sure that we live up to this document, and we'll be continuing to do activities around raising awareness, and our next one's going to be called Eating Lake Ontario, where we'll be eating fish from the lake and learning about what we should and shouldn't be eating from this lake, and you can probably ask yourself how much you know about that, many of us really don't.
30 seconds.
Thanks. And so here's an opportunity to turn our fronts back to the lake and re-engage once again with what I think is our most important public asset in Kingston. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm curious about the work that the group has been doing focusing on access to waterfront, obviously, and if you can comment, you've given any thoughts on this report, the waterfront plan, in terms of how, you've spoken a little bit about economic benefits for the private sector, health benefits, anything to do with social development benefits in that way, I'd be very interested to hear that. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I think the publicness is important, and over the last 30 years, in part because of water quality and real concerns in the past with water quality, people quite literally turned their backs on the lake and started hanging out in their backyards and swimming pools, et cetera, and now we know the water quality is generally very good. It's not perfect, but you know, if it isn't perfect, then we should know about it, and we should understand why it isn't good. So I think there's an opportunity here to start using the lake in ways that bring different types of people together. You look at some of the old photos from the 1950s and 1940s, right back to the 1890s, you know, people mixing on the beach and doing things in public ways along the waterfront, which we haven't really had, so there's that opportunity to do it. Now, you know, it's not as easy for, say, for a kid from the North End to get down to the water, so I think we need to think strategically about how do we do that? So I've had some conversations with the Boys and Girls Club about thinking about water educational and activities and busing and transportation and so on, so I think we need to be thinking about, you know, making this not just a middle-class recreational thing, but how do we make sure that people without backyard pools are able to use the waterfront, or skate in the winter, et cetera? So I think the social part of it is important, and I mentioned the kind of cultural and spiritual aspects of it too, right? So, you know, it's not just about recreation, people want to sit and meditate in front of the lake, or, you know, think about the kind of indigenous histories here, so I think there's multiple ways that we can, you know, think beyond the kind of recreational aspects of our water.
Councillor Neil.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll be asking our planners the same question when the recommendation comes forward, but how would you, after all the hard work that you've done, how would you hope your recommendations are reflected in both our official plan or in zoning around development along the waterfront?
I think the plan does it. I really think the plan is fantastic at thinking about where we want to invest and why we want to invest, and it took seriously opinions from a wide range of people, community input, the professional understanding that the consultants and staff had of these things, so I support the project, full-on. It's the pace at which we do these things, and, you know, really in a lot of cases, there's no reason we can't accelerate this thing, it's a budgetary constraint, and we as a committee didn't get to discuss budgets, we talked to discuss priorities and consultation. So, you know, I wouldn't challenge virtually anything in there, I think the report is fantastic the way it stands.
Yep, and budget, that's our headache now.
And budget is what, three?
Budget will be our headache here at council, having accepted the recommendation.
Yes, so I hand that over to you to figure out the ways in which we can, you know, make that accelerate in your term, right? You're about a third of the way through your term. Some of these projects, we're looking at, you know, breakwater, not getting the shovel on the ground until 2018, and you know, there's a project that, it's sitting on the shelf, ready to go, why are we waiting till 2018? It's ridiculous, in my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Okay, see no other, councillor George.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I just wanted to clarify with the speaker, did I, did I hear you clearly state that you're, not only yourself, but the group that you represent, that you felt this is a well-authored water plan report, and that the staff, through consultation with the public, did a really tremendous job putting this together, and...
Yes.
You did say that.
I did say that.
That's great for a change, because we don't hear that very often in the chamber, so...
And believe me, I don't say these things very often.
I wanted to make sure I was hearing that right, you know, so, thanks for that.
We'll note that in the minutes. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to our next delegation, Jennifer McCall will appear before council to speak to new motion number one, received from councillor McLaren and councillor Neil, with respect to the National Universal Pharmicare Programme.
So, thank you so much for having us here tonight. So we would like to speak to you about Pharmicare, why we need it, and why we're asking Kingston City Council to pass a motion in support of it. So first of all, what is Pharmicare? Pharmicare will be full coverage for prescription medications, so this is very similar to Medicare right now, you go see a doctor, and you don't have to pay for that, the government pays for you to go see that doctor, but then that doctor gives you a prescription for a medication, and you walk out the door and you can't afford it, so you have a diagnosis, and now you can't treat it. So we want to round out our public healthcare system that we're so proud of as Canadians, and get prescription medications covered. Why does Canada need Pharmicare? Well, currently, one in 10 Canadians cannot afford to get their prescribed medications. This is a huge barrier, because if patients are unable to get their medications, they are going to have increased healthcare services, they're going to go to the emergency departments more often. For example, we know that having high blood pressure can lead to having a heart attack. We also know that the cost of taking blood pressure medications for 30 years is less than that if the person were to go on and have a heart attack. Now, we're not just talking about monetary costs here, we're also talking about quality of life. If we are advocating for our patients and our population to have these medications, we will potentially be saving them for more significant health outcomes in the future.
So currently, Ontario does have a plan in place to cover some individuals, but the individuals who aren't covered are employees without benefits, self-employed individuals such as farmers, business owners, home daycare workers, and children, so these are really vulnerable population, where sometimes parents are choosing between, you know, their medications and those of their child who has diabetes.
So the main issue that we're concerned with here is social inequity. The people who are the most affected by this issue are the working poor, so we're not talking about people who are unemployed, because often people who are unemployed have unemployment insurance, and they also have Ontario drug benefits, but it's those people who are really living paycheck to paycheck, they're working so hard just to meet their bottom line, and they don't have any drug insurance, so when they have an illness and they can't afford their medications, they are financially imbalanced, and they really lose the control that they've had over their situation so far. These people, when they can't take their medications, they're more likely to experience poorer health outcomes, they're further disadvantaged already, even from their status in poverty, due to the inability to complete treatment, even if they're able to begin it, and they end up in emergency rooms to receive this medication. It's a very sad situation, we see very frequently in the hospital, doctors will prescribe medication to a patient while they're in hospital, they'll start to get better, and then we know that when we discharge this patient to go home, they can't afford to continue taking their medication. Sometimes doctors will even keep patients in the hospital longer so that they can continue to give them this medication, when it would be so much cheaper to give them a prescription to take at home, instead of keeping them in the hospital and spending those healthcare dollars every day. It's also a barrier for those who want to leave social assistance, because they'll be facing the loss of pharmaceutical benefits. So for example, I knew a patient who had asthma, and she was working part-time and receiving some social assistance, and she wanted to work full-time, she wanted to become a more productive member of society and get off social assistance, but her puffers cost her hundreds of dollars every month, and it was not a financially good decision for her to work full-time because of the cost of her medications.
So why should Kingston care? Well, because this will mean better health for all Kingstonians, and this will have positive implications for population health. Furthermore, it'll save Kingston money, I mean, city employees of city will have to pay for their drug plans through the municipal budget, and if we're able to instead take that out, then we can use that money for other necessary city projects.
We also know that Kingston's population is composed of many small business owners and many farmers, these people are often uninsured, therefore they cannot have access to these medications. If, just thinking back to our heart attack example, if somebody does end up having a heart attack, a hard-working farmer...
30 seconds.
He is going to need more access to home care, rehabilitation, and an increase use in social services. There's also going to be a decrease in workforce productivity, and there's going to be an increased reliance on the healthcare system, so as Kingstonians, we need to show the federal government and the provincial government that this is important to our city.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. Can you tell me of anyone else, or any other organizations, or any other municipalities that have endorsed or done this?
Yes, so actually, many municipalities, I have that on the slide somewhere, yes. So many of the municipalities in Canada have already done this, including Toronto, Vancouver, Marathon, Marathon in Northern Ontario was the first municipality to do this, have done similar things to show that this is an important issue to Canadians across the country, and it's, this is also similar to the Basic Income Guarantee motion that was passed by this very council, and that has led to the pilot project for that service in Canada. Thank you. Also, there are these organizations that have supported it, including the College of Family Physicians of Canada, the Registered Nurses Association of Ontario, and many other, the Queen's University Public Health Faculty have all come together and said, this is a good idea, this is something that we need to do. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Deputy Mayor Turner.
Thank you, and through you. I'm just wondering, sounds like a great idea, but how much would this cost the taxpayers if it goes through the federal government? Any idea?
Yes, so if it goes through the federal government, there are many different models that have been proposed for this, it actually looks like it will be a cost-saving initiative, obviously that's down the line, there's an initial investment that would be needed, it looks like it'll cost the federal government about $1 billion in the first year, and then from then on, it'll give savings of about $7.2 billion a year, and these savings are coming from decreased healthcare utilization, so as we were saying, the person who does not have the heart attack, we're going to save costs in that way, we're also going to have an increase in productivity of the society, and there are also, right now, many fragmented drug programs that exist in Ontario and in the country, so we have, in Ontario, our seniors benefit, the Ontario Drug Benefits for those who are unemployed, and when all of these administrative fragmentations come together to be one overarching administration, it's projected that the cost savings from that will be very large.
It's also interesting, because the same study which projected $7.2 billion in saving, found that the worst-case scenario, if we implemented Universal Pharmicare, would still save us $4.2 billion.
Okay, thank you, but I have another question. Would it lead to generic drugs? Is this what they found in the study as well?
Some of the cost savings absolutely were from generic drug use, but as we know as health professional students, generic drugs are the exact same chemical formulas as name-brand drugs, so it doesn't really make a difference to our population's health, but it is definitely part of the savings.
And the proposal is to have a national formulary, so you would have physicians and other healthcare professionals get together and decide what drugs would be included on the ability to be covered for individuals, so if a generic drug hasn't been shown to be more efficient or effective for patients, then they wouldn't be included on the formulary.
So it'd be kind of like an LCBO of drugs, in a way?
Sorry, what's a CBO?
Like an LCBO? Like how we have the power to buy all this alcohol and then...
That's right. Yeah, and it's very similar to...
That's good. Thank you very much.
You can answer, but that is technically a third question. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So this council endorsed a basic income guarantee studied by the federal government, and we're seeing some action from that on the provincial, from the provincial government. In terms of social equity, would that not provide that base that we're looking for in terms, so would we need this Universal Pharmicare if we've got this more equitable system of a basic income guarantee?
So, the basic income guarantee is kind of bringing people up to a certain threshold, so it's bringing people up to a baseline, however, something like Universal Pharmicare allows people who do get sick, who go below that threshold, to still maintain at that threshold. So, I don't know if that makes explaining this well, but it's for the working poor, the people who, you know, are making that basic income, but they're facing catastrophic drug prices, they're facing hundreds of dollars in asthma medication for their kids, or insulin prices for, to maintain their diabetes, so these are just to help even cover a portion of those costs, so that they're not having to even go on to basic income.
And furthermore, the cost savings that will come from Pharmicare will come beyond that from, as you said, basic income, because it'll come from the, as the bulk buying that we were alluding to, from the Pan-Canadian Pharmaceutical Alliance, that otherwise, we'll still have individuals going with their basic income and buying drugs individually, instead of having a bulk purchasing from, for example, a single insurer, that would really be able to bring down drug prices.
Okay, thank you, and I have another question, and that's basically, I'm just trying to phrase it here, so if we were to develop a Universal Pharmicare system, and I know that there are systems across the world that already exist, is there a danger that we rely on Pharma Care or Pharma to solve our problems rather than making systemic change upfront, where we're able, we've talked about heart disease, we've talked about diabetes, we've talked about a lot of things that are connected to diet and our way of life, and my concern with going in this direction would be that we are looking at a system that has, that doesn't look at preventing the disease from happening in the first place, but just treats it because it's easier, and we have a system that makes it that much easier. Do you care to comment on that, please?
Well, as a public health student, I 100% agree that we do need to focus on prevention, we do need to have a system that facilitates that. However, you'd still have individuals who are, you know, don't have access to those preventative methods, and they are currently facing the struggles of not having a Pharmicare programme, so even if we do try our best with prevention, that's a very long-term plan that we need to reach, but right now, having Universal Pharmicare will help the people who are currently in need, and will allow us to work on a long-term plan that will not just be trying to fix the current difficulties that a lot of people are facing.
I'll just add to that quickly, that in our ideal situation, the money that we save from Pharmicare is going to go back into health initiatives like preventative public health, that would be, I think, an ideal situation for all of us, and also, costs, we call it non-adherence, when people don't take their medications because of cost, that's one issue, but people don't like to take medications, especially young people, you know, as you said, we're seeing high blood pressure in younger and younger people, and in people with diabetes, younger and younger, and people hate taking medications, they don't like to take a pill, it makes them feel unhealthy, so I think we're going to have to look for other factors, other than medications being, you know, cheaper, to drive people, to motivate them to get out of these social illnesses.
Councillor Neil.
Just very quickly, I believe I read during the last federal campaign, when there was some debate around Universal Pharmicare, that Canada and the US are the only two countries in the G8 Western democracies that doesn't offer Universal Pharmicare. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's true. Canada is the only OECD country that has universal healthcare without Universal Pharmicare, so we really have an incomplete healthcare system. So we really have an incomplete healthcare system, and when Tommy Douglas initially created Canada's, you know, public healthcare system that we're so proud of, his plan was for there to be hospital care and physician care, and then drugs, and then home care and dental, but we'll talk to you about that in a few years.
Thank you. You won me over as soon as you said Tommy Douglas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our third delegation this evening is Dr. Gemmell, Medical Officer of Health for Kingston Front Akonix in Addington Public Health, who will appear before council and speak to clause one, report number forty, received in the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee with respect to the Waterfront Master Plan. Dr. Gemmell.
Your Worship, members of council, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. Before I start, I would like to acknowledge the three members of this council, who are also members of the Board of Health, which is Counselors Allen, Counselor McLaren, and Counselor Stroud. And I'm here as well to support the Waterfront Master Plan. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this evening on an issue that is critical to facilitating opportunities for healthy living in our community. I've written to you previously to let you know of the strong support that KFAA Public Health lends to the Waterfront Master Plan. And as outlined in our correspondence to the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee, our agency endorses Kingston's Waterfront Master Plan, supports the recommendations in it, and urges you to approve it. From the perspective of health of the whole community, we know that physical inactivity is a hugely important risk factor for poor health, and it is a factor for over 25 chronic conditions, cardiovascular disease and stroke, diabetes, obesity, and all of the other illnesses such as arthritis that are associated with obesity, and many others. Despite its significant health benefits, however, most adults, children, and youth do not achieve the activity levels recommended in the Canadian Physical Activity Guidelines. Inactivity, however, is a modifiable risk factor for disease. With the right personal inspiration and motivation, and the right facilities in the community, people can adopt the health behaviors that will help them to be as healthy as they can be. While there are many different ways of providing these facilities, Kingston is fortunate, as you've already heard from the first delegate, fortunate to have a waterfront that is beautiful, engaging, and one that can attract residents to take advantage of it if it is developed strategically to promote active living, and we believe this plan is. Park systems with pathways that connect public spaces promote physical activity and thereby health within the community. Evidence has shown that the availability of, in close proximity to parks, is linked to increased use and increased physical activity. More specifically, the presence of paved trails is the strongest predictor of a public's use of parks. Research clearly indicates that if public spaces and amenities for physical activity are easily accessible, residents are more able to achieve adequate recommended levels of physical activity. With that comes the health benefits to the individuals, but also the benefit of a healthier community, better productivity, and less stress on our health system. Kingston's Waterfront Master Plan will facilitate increased physical activity for Kingston's residents through a citywide recreational waterfront system that creates opportunities for recreation and active transportation. This plan will be achieved by improving the current amenities available in waterfront parks and improving access to recreational opportunities for residents of all ages. It's especially important in the more rural areas of Kingston, where accessible recreational opportunities may not be as plentiful. Most importantly, the Waterfront Master Plan will increase the quality of the waterfront trail and its connectivity to a greater network both on and off roads. These improvements to the waterfront trail system will allow residents to walk, to cycle, for leisure, and to connect them to a larger transportation network, so that cycling and walking will become a normal option for personal transportation. Developing a citywide recreational waterfront system will help to increase access to facilities that promote walking and cycling, thereby providing opportunities for increased physical activity. Our agency strongly supports the Waterfront Master Plan and urges council to endorse that plan, and thereby to facilitate significant opportunities for optimizing the health of the residents of this city. Thank you for considering the endorsement of the waterfront plan. I also want to mention specifically, while I have the opportunity, how much we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city's staff to review this and other plans and projects to ensure that health is always an important consideration in these initiatives, the ones that the city is planning. We value this relationship that ensures health is on the agenda and an integral part of any public policy. Your Worship, thank you very kindly.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes, Counsel Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Dr. Gemmell, for an excellent presentation. You mentioned obvious benefits of the motivating people to, for physical activity through recreational space, but also with the pathway that would be for active transportation. I'm wondering if you're aware of any positive health effects of just being in proximity to a large natural area, like a large open body of water, and of course, the trees and greenery that exist in those spaces.
You mean, just in the sense of personal well-being?
Yes.
I feel pretty happy being a resident in Kingston, if that's an example. I think all of these things add to our quality of life, and of course, these things have a positive impact on how people feel about themselves, and therefore, on their ability to be healthier as well.
The second question is a little bit off the wall, but it's inspired by the second I'm just struck by the fact that you're here in support of the Waterfront Master Plan and its positive health effects, and nothing to do with the administration of medications. And I'm wondering if you think there's any link between the two when it comes to positive health outcomes?
Sorry, between the Waterfront Master Plan and?
And universal pharmacare.
A link between the two of them?
I...
Well, I don't know what to think about that question. I think the point was raised, I mean, if public health does our jobs perfectly, nobody will need any drugs ever. And so, you know, these young people will be able to divert the money to some other beneficial cause. That's not the case so far. We have a big job in engaging people to want to be healthier. We need to give them personal motivation, but part of it is having the facilities available. And when they're not available, no one's going to be doing anything, because it's just too difficult. When we have the facilities available, that makes it much easier for people to make the decision to be healthier and to gain all those health benefits.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you so, thank you very much.
Are there any other delegations to add this evening? Counsel McLaren.
Thank you. May I make a motion to waive the bylaw for, the requisite bylaw for two more delegations? Oh, one at a time? Okay.
So, yes, so we need to move them one at a time. Do we have, do we have those motions ready? Can we just put them up on the screen, please? Okay, so we have a motion to waive our procedural bylaw in order to allow Mr. Michael Gallagher to speak to new motion number three. So that's moved by Counsel McLaren. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel Allen. Okay, please vote. Counsel Stroud.
I also have identical motion for the addition of a delegation from Mr. Peter Rubens. I believe it's spelled with an E. Ruben.
Okay, so we have a motion to add Mr. Rubens.
Rubens, R-U-B-E-N-S.
And is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel O'Sanick. I'll call the vote. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any other delegations to add? Okay, seeing none. Next, I will invite up Mr. Gallagher, who will speak to council with regards to new motion number three. Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm here on behalf of our church, St. Paul the Apostle Church, located on Tailorm Kidd Boulevard here in Kingston. I'm here together with the co-chair of our group, our group's name Sanctuary Refugee Sponsorship Group. I'm here to get with the co-chair of that group, Mary Campo. In starting this evening, I'd like to ask you all one question. What did you do today? Some of you worked in your businesses, some of you worked for employers or organizations. Members of council prepared for this evening's meeting, members of the delegations prepared for their presentations. I ask because three very good friends of mine spent most of today learning to speak A skill that four years ago, they could not have anticipated ever needing to do. Circumstances beyond their control put them into a refugee situation in Lebanon four years ago. They were coming from a life in Syria, in the city of Aleppo. That wasn't bad. Aleppo was the major city in Syria. The husband and father of our family, Mahmoud Mari, operated his own business, a clothing store. Shortly before the war, business was good enough that it allowed him to open a second location. He was doing well. And then they lost everything. On September 23rd last, a group from our church got together, and seeing the same images in the media that all the rest of you saw, decided it wasn't enough to shake our heads and say somebody should do something. I don't take any great credit for it. It was really the first time our parish had come together in such a manner. But we decided there and then that we would do something. On December the 16th, six new newcomers to Canada began calling Kingston their home. When they landed at Kingston Airport at 1:00 that day, they had no idea what they were coming into. They had no idea who these people waiting inside the airport terminal were. They put the rest of their future in our hands. Our responsibility is threefold. One is to make sure that they had access to all the resources necessary to establish life here in Kingston. The other one was to communicate that need to the broader community, and the third one was raise the money to pay for it. We've budgeted between $45,000 and $50,000 to support this family. The money we needed to support this family has already been raised. It's in the bank. Phase one continues as we start to prepare for phase two. One of our needs is to establish ongoing, stable funding for this project. I realize my presentation to you here, in terms of some of the other orders of business on the agenda this evening must seem small. When we're talking about millions of dollars for waterfront development, when we're talking more millions of dollars for pharmacare, all great projects, I'm here tonight asking you for less than $1,000. My more important reason this evening is to make sure that we all understand what an opportunity this is for Kingston. That we, as a city, can establish a critical mass of people, newcomers to Canada, who will in turn encourage people they know to come to Kingston, instead of Toronto, or Montreal, or Vancouver. Thank you. In requesting your support for this motion this evening, I speak not just on behalf of our family, but also the wider community. There's an opportunity here for all of us to learn the lessons that we've learned from our involvement with this group, this family, over the last three months. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counsel Allen.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, just one question. Could you share with us, it's my understanding that there's much more than money that it takes to help bring, integrate these families into our community. Do you care to share some of the things that your group of volunteers do on a daily basis to ensure that that integration takes place?
City staff will appreciate this, innumerable committee meetings. Yes, the planning started last September. Our family arrived in December, and that's really when the work began. We have an incredibly talented and dedicated group of people, not only from our parish, we work with other community groups and other faith communities on this project as well. But each week, we do everything from taking this family, I didn't have an opportunity to mention, the husband and father of our family is paraplegic and has been since early childhood. So that just adds another wrinkle to how we need to interact with the family. But some evenings, right now, this evening, as we speak, there are members of our group sitting on the living room floor of their apartment, helping them with English. Other times during the week, we're taking them for medical appointments, dental appointments, connecting them to various community organizations. We have been to Kingston Community Health Centers more time than I care to mention. Wonderful facility with fantastic people who have been so helpful to us. So those are some of the things that we do on an ongoing basis, a lot of time for a lot of people.
Thank you, and just a quick follow-up. I just, you said that you're holding this event in September to start phase two, or to get phase two rolling, but we don't know what phase two is. Can you just enlighten us a bit as to what phase two of the project is?
From the beginning, Sanctuary was intended and is not going to be a one-of project. We're not just bringing one family in and then going away. We have developed skills and knowledge base here, and have wonderfully skilled and dedicated people. To not use that for another family would be an incredible waste. That's phase two, bring in another refugee family. At some point, phase three, another refugee family. And so, and that's why the funding is so important. We don't want to be always trying to figure out how we're going to pay for this. We want to establish regular funding model that we can rely on to pay for the money that's going to be necessary to do that. We expect that, we anticipate, phase two would begin in September. In addition to this event at, we're hoping, the Grand Theatre, we've also scheduled a golf tournament. So golfers, June 4th, Camden Brays Golf Course, the golf tournament will proceed to Sanctuary Refugee Sponsorship.
Counsel McLaren.
Thank you. You mentioned that the father was a paraplegic. Are there any other special needs that this family has as a result of, say, living in a refugee camp for so long, or coming to a new country?
There are ones that we know about, and ones that we can only anticipate. The one that, I guess the one that I'd share with you this evening, a few weeks ago, our family went for their very first dental appointment. And I don't mean their very first dental appointment in Kingston, I mean their very first dental appointment. Their teeth are in really bad shape. In terms of confidentiality, I'm not going to share too much of the details with you. Suffice to say, I've seen some big bills in this project. I was shocked at what the estimate is for the dental services that are going to be required for this family. It's not optional. We will do it, and we will figure out how to pay for it. But yes, that's one. The other one that we don't know about, but a lot of smart people have told us that we should anticipate, is the mental health issues. We haven't seen them yet. It's not unusual for that type of thing to take several months to present. So we're continuing to talk to and anticipate a need for help in that area as well.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. And then our final delegation this evening is Mr. Rubens, who will speak to council regarding the Waterfront Master Plan.
Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to address the issue of our waterfront master plan this evening. I know it was quite late on me, on my part, excuse me, to get here, so thank you again. My name's Peter Rubens. I have been a resident of Kingston for over 50 years. And in that time, but for a few short years, I've never lived more than a block from our waterfront. I grew up here, and I raised a family adjacent to the waterfront. And in that time, I've seen many changes, both good and, well, not so good. This plan, however, sets the stage for great opportunities for our waterfront. I attended the majority of the public meetings concerning the waterfront master plan, and in particular, all the focus meetings which were directly applicable to the urban portions of the plan. During these meetings, I along with my fellow Kingstonians provided direct feedback on the makeup of the plan and offered many suggestions in which we highlighted particular aspects of importance: shoreline improvements, accessibility pathways, connections, open green space, natural and historically important features, to name a few. Citizens of Kingston hold our waterfront in high regard. It sets us apart from many other communities which lack this precious resource. It also differentiates us from those urban landscapes which have had the opportunity to protect their waterfront but squandered or neglected this unique resource and consequently filled their shorelines with condominiums, apartments, parking lots, and urban highways. Now, each meeting I attended brought out local residents who were encouraged to contribute their input and vision for our waterfront, whether they lived in the focus area or not. As a whole, their contributions have resulted in a broad picture of what we as citizens would like to see our 280 kilometers of waterfront look like in the future. The objectives of the master plan were clearly defined from the beginning as a "strategic approach to the implementation and improvement of the city's waterfront" end of quote, and included a methodology which "organizes and prioritizes a plan for the renewal of public waterfront spaces." So with a framework in place and the input from all interested parties in a multifaceted approach, the conclusions for us as citizen participants were clearly summarized in the final November 16th public meeting. Under the heading of "Top 10 Results for All Focus Areas," there are 25 projects which the waterfront master plan prioritized as those most important. And this was further defined in the 2016 plan that is before council here tonight for consideration. Again, it identifies project priorities based on a priority matrix formula, and the results are a total of 138 identified projects, of which 25 are noted under the heading "Highest Ranked Top 25 Projects." I would like to emphasize that the top two prioritized projects on this list are the completion of Richardson Beach and the reconstruction of Breakwater Park. As many of us are aware, Breakwater Park has been endorsed by our mayor and was a key issue in his political platform in his run for office. Breakwater Park is a high-viability project which had been approved by a previous council and was 95% shovel-ready for construction in 2014. However, this did not materialize. The park and its rehabilitation was subsequently rolled into the waterfront master plan for what seemed like another kick at its future. And what this report does is simply reaffirm what had been acknowledged in the past, that this is a very important project. In fact, redeveloping this parkland could be seen as a linchpin project under which we begin the process of re-establishing a link with that 280 kilometers of waterfront. At a time when we excitedly bring plans and projects such as this to the fore, we are failing to protect the assets which we already have. We're in real danger of losing important connections to our waterfront, namely the launch Phoebe and our Kingston Marine Museum of the Great Lakes, as well as the ship Alexander Henry. And in the case of the museum, potentially replacing it with what the new owner developer will demand, another addition to our wall of concrete on the waterfront, another multi-story building. Residents in some parts of our downtown want nothing to do with multi-story structures, much less the associated traffic. Residents, students who live adjacent to the two parks I've mentioned already have a helicopter pad, parking lots, high-traffic volumes, temporary and permanent construction sites, all within this waterfront green space. We need to take back the waterfront and make it even more relevant to our citizens of the city. I won't see all of these projects completed in my lifetime, not if we start Breakwater Park in 2018. But let us approve this report, take action, and move forward. And maybe this time, with this report in hand, we will see the beginning of a great waterfront, which all Kingstonians can be proud of. I applaud everyone who participated in this exercise. And with that, I encourage council to accept this document. It's a document that embraces the wishes of Kingstonians and is of immense benefit to the vitality and future growth of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing, yes, Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Mr. Rubens. You say you live near Breakwater Park, and I know you do because you're in my district. What would you say would be something, a fairly simple way of increasing pedestrian access to that space once it's developed?
One of the biggest barriers to access to the waterfront, and certainly at Breakwater Park, is simply getting there. One of the initial points that came out in the original public forums conducted before 2013 was the safe, secure access to the waterfront. Now, what I mean by that is simply crossing King Street. And this was a really big issue with people. It was front and center on everybody's mind. Unfortunately, this is not part of the waterfront master plan. It's as though at the curb, right at that curb between the park and the road network itself, that's where the discussion ends. So when we're looking at people from all over this city biking down to our waterfront, people accessing Breakwater Park in particular because it has no parking lot, people have to access the park from across the street. They park on side streets like Collingwood or Beverly or so on. For those people, they have to cross that street. Now, we've made some very small strides in the last little while. I wouldn't necessarily say that courtesy crossing was a great step, but it has now been supplanted by a set of traffic lights. And those traffic lights unfortunately are what they call resting green or standing green lights, meaning that the only way that you can access the waterfront is to go up to that intersection, press the button, and cross the street. Now, we all know what people do. The shortest distance between two points is a straight line. So what people are going to end up doing is crossing at all kinds of different intersections, Beverly Street, down at Lower University. I'll just give you a couple of things, Peter, right now. Incidents that happened in January, one of them being an accident that I attended. And this accident occurred early in the morning. I heard a squeal of tires and a loud bang, and the first thing I did was pick up the phone and dial 911. I got outside, got dressed quickly, and then I got outside, and then I met an officer, and we found a single-vehicle accident. This accident, by the way, occurred right in front of the purification plant. And if you remember, several years ago, a young man was killed there. It was a very, very tragic situation. Fortunately, this didn't injure anybody, but it was a serious enough accident. The first thing the officer said to me when we were looking at the damaged tree was, boy, I wish they had speed bumps here. And I concur it right away. The second incident, I will just briefly mention this, was something that happened about a week later. And I was standing at my front yard, pretty much on King Street, and I watched a car go whizzing by me eastbound into the downtown. He was traveling 97 kilometers an hour. Now, you might ask me why I know 97 kilometers an hour. We as citizens in the area managed to convince the city to put up driver feedback signs. And these driver feedback signs have a tendency, I believe, to underestimate the true speed, maybe three or four kilometers an hour. So what that meant was this individual was probably doing in excess of 100 kilometers an hour in our downtown, heading downtown. I'll just remind you that 100 kilometers an hour is what we do on our 400 series highways. There's no urban area that I know of where we can travel 100 kilometers an hour on a two-lane road, certainly in the downtown like that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for council? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, we have no briefings tonight. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion of congratulations, first moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to our special events staff for receiving the 2016 Municipality of the Year Award, Mid-Sized City Category, from Festivals and Events Ontario. This award recognizes Kingston's great events and festivals, as well as the positive environment and partnerships that allow them to succeed. Thank you to the Downtown Business Improvement Area, Kingston Accommodation Partners, Kingston Tourism, and The Great Waterway for your ongoing support and contributions to festivals and events in our community. A motion of condolence, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family and friends of Bob Clark, who passed away on February 26, 2016. Bob was a devoted community supporter and respected business owner, running both Aunt Lucy's Dinner House and St. Lawrence Cruise Lines. Bob will be greatly missed by his family, friends, and the community at large. And on the added to another motion of condolence, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to John Cross, manager of Kingston's Regional Fire Training Centre, on the passing of his father Frank Cross on March 10, 2016. Our thoughts are with John and his family during this difficult time. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, we do have one deferred motion on the agenda, moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Cannon. Whereas municipalities are required to invest their reserves in accordance with the Municipal Act 2001 and Ontario Regulation 438/97 as amended, which specifically outlines allowable investments. And whereas to ensure the sustainability and sound stewardship of the municipality's investments, the city of Kingston is of the opinion that changes should be made to the Municipal Act 2001 and Ontario Regulation 438/97 as amended, to allow for the prudent investment of reserves if those investments are professionally managed and part of a broader investment strategy. And whereas the prudent investor standard is industry-accepted best practice in effectively managing a portfolio of investments, and the standard applies to investments not in isolation, but in the context of the portfolio of investments and as part of an overall strategy, that should incorporate acceptable risk and return objectives suitable to stakeholders. And whereas the province is conferring prudent investor status on the city of Toronto to enable greater diversification and portfolio management, whereas the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Local Authority Services, and the Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ontario have long requested that the prudent investor standard apply to all municipal investment returns from municipalities within these new investment sectors. And whereas in 2005, municipalities were granted the ability to invest in longer-term corporate bonds and Canadian equity investments via only the ONE Investment Programme, and the ONE Investment Programme has demonstrated strong investment returns from municipalities within these new investment sectors. And whereas the institutional portfolio managers utilized by the ONE Investment Programme recommend that the prudent investor standard approach is a more appropriate approach to investing, and whereas operating municipal investments under the prudent investor standard is precluded by the Municipal Act Eligible Investments in its current form, therefore be it resolved that council support the request of AMO, LES, and MFOA to amend Ontario Regulation 438/97 as amended of the Municipal Act 2001, to allow municipalities to invest consistent with the prudent investor standard if such investments are through the ONE Investment Programme, and that this motion be forwarded to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Local Authority Services, and Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ontario, to confirm the support of council of the city of Kingston. Counselor George?
Thank you, Your Worship, for reading that out. And if this happens to be deferred, are you prepared to do it again? First of all, I have, I'm going to try and make this very brief. I have been asked by a member of council to consider deferring this, as there will be a report coming forward, I understand, in May from our treasurer, Ms. Kennedy. And so I'm willing to do that. However, I do have a meeting next week in Toronto with the AMO board, and I will at that time try and find out if this is time-sensitive, that we may have to approve or disapprove of this prior to that report coming to council. But I am willing at this time to move deferral of this in my secondary's agreement until the first meeting in April. And that would allow me the time next week to find out if it is time-sensitive. If it isn't, then we'll move deferral until the report is received from the treasurer.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer to the first meeting in April, moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Cannon. Any debate, respect to time or place? We will Still one person to vote. And that carries. Okay, moving on, report number 35 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Holland. That report, number 35, from the Chief Administration Officer Consent, be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are a number of items, A through J. Would anyone like any of the items separated? Counselor Stroud?
F, please. F, as in Foxtrot?
So item F has been separated. Counselor Sanik?
D and E, please.
D and E. Counselor Neal?
G, please.
Counselor Hutchinson? Any other separations? Yes, item A has been separated because Counselor Bohm has a peculiar interest. Okay, well, there isn't a whole lot left that hasn't been separated, but we will call the vote on that first. So item B is Industry Stewardship Plan for PSF Materials, Amending Agreement with Product Care Association. Item H is Award of Contract to ICE Reservers. Item I is Nomination to the Cataract Region Conservation Authority Source Protection Committee. And item J is Award of Contract for Collection Agency Services. We will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, so first we have item A, Service Agreements, Utilities, Kingston and the City of Kingston. Call the vote. And that carries. Item C, Beer Store at 86 Dalton Avenue, Wall signage, Request for Relief from Sign by Law Number 2009-140. Who separated this? Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Your Worship. My concern here is it seems, here it is. I'm not against signs, okay? Counselor George just asked me that. Being as usual provocative, so the, what concerns me here is that we are, we've got a sign bylaw. And I think the reason why the sign bylaw says what it does is that we don't want an urban landscape or gateways to the city with so many signs that it starts to look, for the lack of a better word, junky. And so the report doesn't really explain, other than it's got to do with their marketing program, right, why we would give them an exemption in this case, and double the number of signs, I believe it is. And so, and underneath that, there's the issue of, if you've got a bylaw, what's the point of having it if you don't uphold it? And how do you tell another business, and this is different times than I'll be on council, how do you tell another business they can't have it? And there's no discussion of that sort of thing in the report. So I'm asking staff if they've got a further explanation about why this exemption should be allowed.
Who was able to speak to that? Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Good question. So part of the rationale that staff looked at when we were reviewing this request is, and you're right, the request came forward from the applicant because they do have a new branding strategy. And what they've asked for at this site is consistent with what the previous council already approved in terms of the new branding strategy that they implemented at the Midland Ave store. So they wanted to provide the Kingston customer with a very consistent look and feel of the store as they continue to renovate this particular franchise. So when we looked So when we looked at that, that was part of our consideration. And that we also looked at too, that the signs that they're requesting are actually under the 20% requirement that's written into the bylaw. So technically, we could have looked at this and deemed that it met the bylaw. Where the confusion came in is the applicant themselves thought that when they received their building permission, that also included the signage, and it does not. It's a separate process, which is why you see this report coming before you, just for the consistency of what we've done in the past.
It's a follow-up question. Be sure that I understand you. Are you saying that the signs in their total square footage is under the bylaw guideline of 20%?
That's correct.
Is that what you followed? Okay. That wasn't clear to me from the report. Okay. Okay, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Neil.
Just a quick question. If I'm not mistaken, this is already, has already been constructed? And if so, are this, is the signage relief they're requesting already in place?
Ms Agnew.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. That would be correct. So as part of the building process, they are under the impression that the approvals they received from the building department as part of their overall building permit included the signage, and in fact is not. So this is a, an application that, once the building inspector caught it, they had to apply for it several months ago, and by the time it came through, the construction was finished. So they were charged an administrative fee, which is typically what happens when somebody constructs a sign that they don't have approval for. And that's how we do things from a process perspective.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries by a vote of 12 to 1. Item D, Max Convenience Store and Gas Bar at 1636 Highway 15, request for relief from sign bylaw number 2009-140. Councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship. The installation of signs is part of site plan, and we have a picture of site plan in exhibit B and exhibit D in our report. My question to staff is, are all the other aspects of site plan completed? And if not, when are they expected to be completed?
Ms Agnew.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. So the site plan, that site is still undergoing some aspects of construction. We're still holding some securities on that site, I believe, for likely some of the finalisation of paving and landscaping as well, based on the time of year of construction. So that will be going through. We would continue to hold the securities for at least a year from the period of time of construction. And then the applicant has the ability, through the process, of providing us with engineer certificates to request the security reduction release.
Thank you. This is asking for an exemption to our sign bylaw. So if council approves this, we're doing it, you know, from goodwill. And I would just hope that the other aspects of site plan, like the landscape burn, can be completed in a timely manner for giving them this exemption. So I will support it, but that's the caveat and my concern for this exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. And that carries. Item E, Kingston Solar LP Renewable Energy Project Community Vibrancy Fund and Community Benefit Fund. Councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship. The fund was created due to the destruction of natural habitat and trees for the Samsung project. The community impacted by Samsung is the Countryside District. And I think it would be really good to hear from the residents of Countryside District for the use of this fund, which is recommending to put it towards the waterfront plan, if we just hear from the residents of Countryside District. So, you know what I'm going to do, right? So, okay. I just want to speak to some concerns that I've heard about going, using the money just towards the waterfront plan. So with this, like, there's different ideas out there. So for instance, one of the strategic priorities of council is to double the tree canopy. So if we put all this money every year towards the waterfront plan, and we know that Samsung had a net loss of trees, canopy and Countryside District, then how are we ever going to try to at least break even, let alone, you know, gain in our tree canopy? So one idea could be that a certain percentage of this community fund could go towards tree planting, or another percentage of the fund could go towards other green initiatives, such as for food farms. Maybe we could create a grant programme where they could get help with solar panels to, you know, help with their energy costs for food farms. So there's lots of different ideas, but we want to hear, my opinion is that we want to hear from the community and Countryside District. So the committee most best suited for that, I think, would be the Rural Advisory Committee. And so what I'd like to put on the table is that this report be deferred to the next meeting of the Rural Advisory Committee, so that they can discuss this staff recommendation as well as other possible options for the spending of the Community Benefit Fund. We know that the last committee meeting was February 29th, before that December 14th, so probably in the spring sometime will be the next scheduled one, and this can be an agenda item.
Okay, thank you. So there is a motion to defer on the floor, moved by councillor Ossanik, seconded by councillor Neil, to defer this item to the Rural Advisory Committee. Is there any debate with respect to time or place only? Councillor Allen.
Just, I need to defer to Commissioner Hurdle, but I think we might have a very busy schedule set for our next meeting. We're going to do some consultation with the community on another issue. I'm not sure if that's happening or not at that meeting, so I just wanted to check before we made that deferral.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I think we can accommodate this item in the, at the next meeting. I know there have been some changes in terms of the agenda that we're looking for for the month of May.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote then on the motion to defer. And that carries. Item F, License Agreement Kingston Tennis Club. Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is my district, so I'm going to stand up. Thank you, staff, for the report and for the great solution that has been proposed here. I'm in full agreement, and I've had the chance to speak with Ms Nichols about it last year. Just to remind council about, you know, about the situation. So Area B parking was rolled out, Queen's University area, right? So that's the on-street parking for residents and commuters, instead of the old system that we had, where people were parking there for free. And it was very successful, except that the free parkers moved down the line to where the parking was still free, which happened to be near the tennis club and the lawn bowling club. And so they were parking there for free and walking to the hospital or to Queen's. And so the, those two organisations had a public meeting hosted by staff at the lawn bowling club last year, and this is the result. For the tennis club's problem, the lawn, as you see in the report, the lawn bowling club doesn't require any exemptions because they're just going to work around the 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. and the 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. schedule, which is the only time you can't park for free. You know, because that's what stops the all-day parkers from parking there, is because those two hours, right? You get a ticket in those hours. So the tennis club's solution is great. They're still paying for it. The number, I always said, had to be in between what it would cost a resident for a monthly permit there, and the fact that these are occasional users and not there all the time. And they've come up with a price structure that I think is perfectly bang on. The question I had was, it's coming from a member of my constituency, so the chain reaction or the domino effect of the cars starting near the campus and then going over near the tennis club, and now we're taking care of the tennis club, and they're going to move a little bit further afield. In fact, they've already started parking on College Street north of Johnson and Brock, where it's still free. And I know some of these people work at the hospital with me, so I know it's still happening. And I'm just wondering what the staff's strategy is for that? Is it going to be this staged approach to continue with small areas that get the restrictions little by little, or is there a whole new area coming? Or what staff's approach is?
Ms Kit.
Through you, Mr Mayor. The on-street programme defined five specific areas when it was first introduced a few years ago. And yes, much to our surprise, we found that some people are quite prepared to walk quite a bit further to still have free parking. The piecemeal approach to dealing with regulations to sort of keep chasing people out of neighbourhood areas is not ideal. It's certainly not what we planned. The broader programme is being reviewed right now. We plan to bring a report back probably in the third quarter of this year, looking at how we can address it in a more holistic way, and looking at some additional areas that need to be added. However, in the meantime, we'll still address neighbourhood complaints on certain streets and street sections as those are presented.
Thank you. Just to use the analogy that my constituent used, he said it was like pouring water on the floor and then using a squeegee to clean it up, and just pushing the water further down the floor, and then wondering why there's still water on the floor. I just thought that was an amusing analogy. Thanks.
Councillor Neil.
Yes, thank you. And I'm glad councillor Stroud brought this up, because it isn't just in Sydney Moore that we're pushing the problem over. As our parking staff will recognise, Napier Street is now problematic. Jenkins and Frotnak Street are now problematic. College Street between Brock and Johnson is now problematic. So it's great for their health that they're walking that far, but it's not so good for residential need for parking on residence streets. So I look forward to our parking staff helping us find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on item F. And that carries. Item G is Award of Contract Split Stream Rear-loading Refuse Packer Truck.
Yes, thank you very much. I separated this because I wanted to mention that in the near campus area and in the core of the city, we have some areas that we're now allowing the smaller green bins, which are preferred by a lot of the residents. But not, as I understand it, not all of our trucks can accommodate the smaller green bins. They're made to accommodate the large green bins. And the problem is that, and councillor Stroud can attest to this, some of the landlords in the near campus area tell their residents that they're not, they don't want them using green bins because of space concerns. So my question is, I understand that a number of the newer trucks that we've purchased can accommodate both the larger and the smaller green bins, and I just wanted to make certain that this purchase indeed can accommodate both of those options for future.
Ms Roberts.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, this truck will be able to service both sizes. Thanks.
I love it when my question's a lot longer than the answer. Thank you very much.
Okay, we will call the vote on item G. And that carries. Okay, moving on to report number 36 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Stroud. That report number 36 from the Chief of Ministry of Officer recommend be received and adopted, clause by clause.
So item number three has been removed, so we just have the two items. So first, item number one is the Capital Project Status Report, fourth quarter 2015. Councillor Camden? Oh, okay. Okay. So we'll call the vote first on item one. And that carries. Item two is the 2015-2016 Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative Surplus Funding Allocation. Councillor Camden has stepped away. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Report number 37 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number 37 from the Planning Committee and ask that it be received and adopted.
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Neil. That report number 37 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
There's just the one clause, revisions to the Civic Addressing and Road Naming Bylaw. And that carries. Report number 38 from the Municipal Heritage Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. I rise now to present report number 38, moved and seconded, and ask that council receive
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Shell. That report number 38 from the Municipal Heritage Committee be received and adopted.
There are four clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? See, none. We will vote on them as a whole. And that carries. Report number 39 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. It gives me pleasure to present report number 39, duly moved and seconded, for the Administrative Policies Committee, and ask that it be received and adopted.
Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Holland. That report number 39 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
There are two items. Item one is tax write-offs pursuant to the Municipal Act. Item two is 2016 Tax R ratios and Tax Capping Parameters. And that carries. Report number 40 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's my pleasure to present report number 40 from the Art Committee, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Bohm, to council for consideration.
Moved by councillor Hutchinson, seconded by councillor Bohm. That report number 40 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there are five items. Would anyone like any of them separated? Councillor Neil? Okay, so, okay, so we'll do them in that order. So number one is the Waterfront Master Plan. Councillor Neil.
Thank you. I just like, oh, it looks like we've lost our planning staff, but not all of them. The commissioners here. I just wanted some assurance that those recommendations that have come out of the master plan can indeed be reflected in both, if it isn't too late, reflected in our OP amendment that's going through a final draft, and can also be reflected in our Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw that we're working over the next year and a half on. Is that a reasonable expectation?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr Mayor. So this question was asked at ARC actually as well. So the answer that we provided then will be the same answer we're providing tonight, is that yes, the waterfront master plan will be reviewed and will be incorporated into the policies of the official plan, and obviously as we work through the zoning bylaw consolidation as well.
Excellent, thank you. My last question, and I don't know if this is through the CAO or the commissioner, but given that we have an ambition... given that we have an ambitious and, I think, excellent report, and the federal government and the provincial government have both are looking at sustainable, green kinds of infrastructure projects rather than larger projects such as roads and that, are some of these projects, like Breakwater Park and like Richardson Beach, are they shovel-ready? So if we hear that the federal government and the province are open to recommendations, can the city move our schedule up on those issues?
Commissioner Hurdle?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we do have, Breakwater Park is actually, has a design done, so it is fairly close to being able to move forward with construction. We also have a design approved for Grass Creek Park, so there had been work done on that one as well. We do have some work that's been advanced on some of the parks, and of course, we would apply to any grant opportunities that become available. We have actually, in the past, applied for a grant for Breakwater Park in particular.
That's good to know, because all three of those parks you mentioned, if we have shovel-ready projects, then we can jump the queue somewhat ahead of other municipalities when they announce the availability of those infrastructure, sustainable infrastructure funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And just briefly, I wanted to commend the, all of the stakeholders who participated in this over the last couple of years. I spent the weekend reading all 700 pages again and again, trying to find a way to move Grass Creek Park up on the priority list, but it was pretty solid in terms of how well it was put together. Unlike Breakwater Park, though, it did get pushed further away rather than closer. However, it was identified as a signature project, which makes it really great. So I'm sort of trying to weigh these feelings as a rural councillor, trying to look at the things that are happening. But I think staff and the folks working on it did a good job at trying to address some of the rural needs in here. And one of the disappointments I had in it was that we could have done more, to echo a previous delegation, to link it with our other projects. And something that I kind of look forward to when we look at active transportation and our next transportation master plan is having something that we can superimpose on these places so that we have a truly active place, city, for people to move from park to park, from Collins Bay to Grass Creek Park, in a safe and active way. And so we don't see, we see some elements of pathways and some connectors built in, but we don't have a cohesive connected system with this plan. It would probably be another 700 pages, but it would be really great, additional 700 pages. So I just wanted to make sure that those comments were heard. I desperately tried to see where I could get Grass Creek Park moved up, but I'm going to go with the fact that we have a plan ready to go, and so if there's some funding that we can move quickly with that, or a partner we can work with on that, we might be able to bump it up. It is a living document, as people have said, and so I take solace in that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councillor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I just wanted to essentially commend the process here. I've had almost nothing but positive endorsement of this from many constituents. I attended a lot of the consultations that happened in my own district, and essentially, it's a great product and it's something that I'm quite pleased to endorse. And as we heard earlier, lots of positive feedback, so it definitely sets kind of a gold bar of what we can do and how we can get these products out and have a truly comprehensive plan and a strategic plan moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognise you.
Thank you. I'd just like to add to the comments that have already been made, that I think this is a fabulous plan. This is, one of our priorities as council, and so it's great to see something like this come forward. There are 81 distinct projects that are identified in this plan, and that's great news and bad news. The great news is, there's all kinds of amazing stuff that we can do with our waterfront. The bad news is, we have some very difficult choices to make about how we prioritise that. And I'm sure that if I was to ask everybody's opinion around this table, we would probably all have different ideas about what should be the first couple of projects. So there are going to be difficult choices. We have only so many dollars to go around, and to the point that was made earlier, that we would like, of course, to be able to move as quickly as possible. We're going to look for those opportunities and be strategic, look for grant funding. But of course, we're also balancing the other needs and priorities that we have as council beyond the waterfront. So this is, this is why we're elected, is to make these sort of decisions. So I look forward to that debate coming forward. But again, it's a great roadmap, and definitely investing in the waterfront is absolutely important, and I'm very pleased to see this go forward. Thank you.
I return the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. And I agree with my colleagues here, and the members of the public who have endorsed this plan, and all the hard work, and have been appreciative of the hard work that's gone into it. And I completely understand the complicated factors that go into determining the priorities for some of the developments that we see here, and I support the ranking system as is. I do want to just address one thing in terms of the priority matrix that was used. Had the opportunity at the ARC Committee meeting to find out a little bit about whether or not there's any emphasis on socio-economic factors when we're putting together a plan like this, and I do think that that should have been included in a priority matrix. Just to give an example, looking at things like density of renting, rental units in the area, transportation concerns, level of income. We have done a lot as a council and in this plan to address connectivity to the waterfront and even connectivity to various parts of the water. So people being connected to the water and a network of good development along the waterway. I would like to see us sort of expand on that and go more in the direction of connecting diverse populations in the city. And I think there is a potential in the future, perhaps this is obviously a broader issue, not just to do with this plan, but to factor in what we could do to create a greater cohesiveness and address some of the limitations and the barriers that exist for members of the city. So with that, I fully endorse the report and appreciate all the work as well, and look forward to seeing it as it unfolds over the next years and decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. I agree, and I'm very pleased to hear all the positive comments, both from delegations and from yourself, your worship, and members of council on this. We've heard some comments along the lines of the regional aspects of this, or the sort of, the various districts that are impacted. As we know, not all the districts are on the water, not every district has an equal treatment in the plan because of the priority matrix. However, it's pretty clear to me that it enjoys widespread support in all the districts. This is from the feedback from the public meetings and from all the comments that we've heard. And I think it's important to note, for example, Breakwater Park happens to be in my district, but the primary users of Breakwater Park are the students of Queen's University, who may or may not live in my district, but they go to school at Queen's, and during the day they will go down to the water in between classes even. Grass Creek Park, I go there often with my children to swim in the beautiful sandy beach that is there. And one of the great features of Grass Creek Park is its lack of traffic issues. There's no traffic noise, there's no traffic to worry about the kids running in front of. It's a dead end at the end of a street in a very secluded area with a beautiful setting, which brings me sort of to my point. My point is that the waterfront master plan also should identify barriers to access. And so we've heard people, actually, there's a theme here that everybody is saying. So councillor Allen is mentioning rural park, Grass Creek Park, the barrier to access there is how far you have to go from the downtown, if you live downtown, to get there. You need to take a vehicle, and there's no service by transit. The barrier to access to Breakwater Park, as mentioned by Mr. Rubens, is the constant flow of traffic crossing right in front of the park, which is the same situation as it has in Toronto with Lake Shore Boulevard. And the barrier to access for, in say councillor Holland's district, is more socio-economic, and also the proximity to what usable parts of the inner harbour one can access. These are all barriers to access. Some of it's dealt with in this plan, but some of it's not. And as this is, as the mayor says, a priority of council, I think we're going to need some kind of high-level approach to barriers of access that's not really contained in the nuts and bolts of the individual projects in the plan, because in some ways, this report is a list of a very impressive community outreach programme and very impressive work by staff, but it's sort of very natured, an itemised list of projects that need to be done, like construction projects, projects, right? It doesn't fully address the barriers to access problem, which is a high-level problem that we're going to have to look into. So I fully support this, and I'm going to support this, and thank staff for it, and I know it's a work in progress, but please start thinking about how we can improve access to the plan, because it'd be a shame to put these 64 million, or even double that amount, into this plan and find that folks are having trouble getting there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hutchinson?
Thank you, your worship. Just want to thank, as a member of the waterfront group and as a council member, both of those things, I'd like to thank staff, who did a tremendous amount of work, and all the community representatives that took part in it, who really brought a lot of thinking and passion to this. I would point out, we were talking, I think the points we made about barriers is very important, but in addition to that, I'd like to point out that in the plan, one of the concerns I had all the way along is that we would be doing something in the east, the centre, and the west of the city, to show people that we were actually investing in their part of the community. And it was one of, a couple of points I really pushed hard. And I wondered about that when it came to ARC, and it was pointed out that the schedule of projects actually, in its own way, takes that into account, because it shows that different projects start at different times, but that some of them overlap. And that's why the priority matrix really worked, and staff and the consultant pointed that out to us. And I think it's important for people to realise that, that there are projects in the west end starting at the same relative time as Breakwater, and a couple in the centre and on the east, and you follow it down. It's on page 708 to 709 or something, so people might not have seen it, except for councillor Allen, of course, who read it three times on the weekend, twice on the weekends, my apologies. And so I think it's really important for people in the city as a whole to understand this is a plan for the whole city, and that certain projects for now got priority. And as councillor Allen pointed out, it's very hard not to stick with that priority list unless you're willing to mess with a lot of other things. They're not all the same amount of money, but some are hundreds of thousands of dollars on the west side, and then there's another for, you know, $80,000 on the east side, but they're all following through. So I just wanted to make that point. And I also want to say that we deferred a motion, and I'm fine that we sent the solar project motion to Rural Advisory for public input, that's just fine with me. But the really good thing is that staff already has made moves to find money. And the one that's in particular was 116,000, approximately 500, for land acquisition and park improvements, the waterfront plan through land acquisition and park improvements. So one green thing is leading to another green thing, and I can't see how that's not good. And we can move forward, and we can feel that it's a long way from 64 million, but at least we have other means to get there, as well as, you know, our usual reserve funds and that sort of thing. So it all seems like, as many people have said, a really positive thing, a really solid plan, and as one of the presenters, Mr. McDonald, pointed out, you can't have everything in it, but it comes awfully close. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Turner?
Thank you, and through you. I sat on this committee, and I have to say, this was one of my favourite committees that I would attend. It was inspiring, all the volunteers were passionate, the committee members were amazing, and they've done a great job. I'd like to thank all of you, and you were just excellent, you were superb, beyond excellent. It's a great roadmap for the future, and as a Kingstonian, the waterfront is very important to us. I also liked how we brought in the first people and their considerations and what they liked and their spiritual thoughts of the waterfront. I thought that was great. And also for the future, how we are going to manoeuvre and adapt to projects that come up. One that I brought up was the deepwater port, as we talked about, and there's places for that, there's places for all kinds of things. So thank you very much, and I really appreciate all your hard work.
Okay, so with that, we will call the vote on item one. We'll now call the vote on the remaining items unless anyone wants them separated. So item two is the interim cancellation policy for recreational facilities. Item three, the creation of a Mayor's Arts Award Working Group. Item four, creation of use of local musicians on city property working group. And item five, City of Kingston Arts Fund Review Working Group. We'll call the vote. Report number 41 from the Rural Advisory Committee.
It's my pleasure to present report number 41 from the Rural Advisory Committee, and that it be received and adopted.
Moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Bohm, that report number 41 from the Rural Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there are two items. Item one is the Eastern Ontario Development Fund. Item two, Frotnak Community Futures Development Corporation. We'll call the vote. Report number 42 from the Nominations Advisory Committee.
Thank you, your worship. It's my pleasure to present the report number 42 from the Nominations Advisory Committee, moved by myself and seconded by councillor George, for consideration by council. Thank you.
Moved by councillor Hutchinson, seconded by councillor George, that report number 42 from the Nominations Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
So there are two items. Number one is appointments to Heritage Kingston, and I'll just read out those names. These are for appointments to be made for staggered terms of two to four years. Paul Carl, Patricia Fiori, Matt Gervan, Peter Goheen, Sherman Hill, Catherine Hyatt, Megan Carrigan, Jamie McKenzie-Nash, and Don Taylor. Item two is appointment to the Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee, that Andrew Johnston be appointed to the Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee for a one-year term to November 30th, 2016. We'll call the vote. Nothing from committee of the whole. We do have four information reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand as I call them out. Item one is the development of a public engagement framework and interim guidelines for city projects and initiatives. Councillor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. So the items that are listed, I'm sorry, I don't have it here, but upcoming big items that people might be wanting to pay attention to and get more involved in, some of those are happening quite soon, and I was just curious about the consultation process and whether there are any changes in upcoming meetings. For example, there's a meeting in April to do with transit, it's a public meeting, if it's the regular format, or if there will be different types of consultation involved. if it's the regular format, or if there will be different types of consultation involved.
Who would like to take that? Ms. Carroll.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So what we're trying to do is establish minimum standards that will be in play throughout the life of a project. So there may be numbers of opportunities to go out to the public. In some cases, legislation may require an information session, for example, but at some point during the lifespan, we will adhere to a minimum standard of making sure that we report back to the community to make sure that they understand how their input has been used in the decision-making process, or if it hasn't been, why not?
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item number two is tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of January 2016. Item three, 2015 Statement of Remuneration and Expenses Paid to Council Members. Item number four, 2016 Municipal Debt Limits. Okay, we have no information reports from members of council. Moving on to miscellaneous business. Number one, that the following members of council be appointed to serve on the under-noted committee. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Stroud. Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. There is a problem. One of the members to be elected should be a member of the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee, and I do have a motion to address that, that I would like to present, that staff have. Whereas the mandate for the new Heritage, oh, it's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Stroud. Whereas the mandate for the new Heritage Committee, Heritage Kingston Committee includes a provision that one of the two councillors accepted must be on the Arts Recreation Community Policies Committee, whereas the Kingston Heritage Committee reports directly to council, therefore be it resolved that the mandate for the Heritage Kingston Committee be altered to delete that the requirement is for two councillors, one of whom serves on the ARC Policies Committee, to two councillors of the City of Kingston.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to have to rule that motion out of order, because we have a motion that is on the floor, and that's not a motion to amend the existing motion. So what we can do instead, councillor Shell, is I have a motion to amend this motion that will do exactly what it is that you want to do, but procedurally, that's just a much cleaner way to go. Okay? So we'll rule that out of order, and I will hand the chair over to the deputy mayor, please.
And I recognise you.
Thank you. So as councillor Shell has pointed out, there is an issue in that we need to make an adjustment to the bylaw in order for councillors Shell and councillor Stroud to move forward as the nominees for Heritage Kingston. So I will put forward this motion to amend. Can I have a seconder, please? Seconded by, is it seconded by, seconded by deputy mayor Turner? So I think everything has been said, I really have no further comment, but obviously, this would just allow for councillor Stroud and councillor Shell to be the nominees for Heritage Kingston.
Oh, I read the motion, okay. That motion number one, miscellaneous business be amended by adding the following here too. Let the bylaw be presented to council, given three readings on March 22nd, 2016, to amend bylaw 2010-205 as amended, being a bylaw to define the mandate, meaning procedures for committees established by the Corporation of the City of Kingston by deleting in Schedule B-4, under composition, the requirements that one of the two members of council appointed to the Heritage Kingston must be a member of the Arts Recreation and Community Policies I give the chair back to you.
Thank you. Just note that that motion to amend passed. On the motion as amended, we will call the vote. And that carries. Miscellaneous motion number two, that the resignation of Catherine Porter from the Arts Advisory Committee be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. Councillor Neil?
Just by way of information, could I ask the clerks when this position might be able to be advertised and filled? Because the Arts Advisory Committee has a very ambitious and busy agenda and schedule ahead, so it would be great to have a full complement.
Mr. Clerk?
True, Mr. Mayor, we'll advertise that expeditiously. Thank you.
That was very politic, but I'm not sure it answered my question.
Okay, we'll call the vote on the motion as amended, or, sorry, that was the previous one, just on the motion. And that carries. Onto new motions. New motion number one, moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Neil. Whereas the World Health Organisation's right to health, which includes essential drugs and the core content of minimum rights in the state, is obligated to fulfil the rights, and whereas one in 1964, a national universal pharmacare programme to cover the costs of outpatient prescription medications was recommended be included in the national Medicare system by the Royal Commission on Health Services. Number two, in 1997, the National Forum on Health recommended a universal first-dollar pharmacare programme. Number three, in 2002, the Romano Commission recommended catastrophic drug coverage as a first step towards a pharmacare programme. And whereas Canada is the only organisation for economic cooperation and development country with a universal healthcare system that does not provide coverage from prescription medications, and whereas Canadians pay among the highest per capita spending on prescription drugs of the OECD countries, and whereas one in ten Canadians are unable to fulfil a prescription because of cost, which in turn compromises the ability to reach an optimal level of health and can drive up healthcare costs in other areas, including more physician visits and hospitalisations, and whereas the Government of Canada has a responsibility under the Canada Health Act to protect, promote and restore physical and mental wellbeing of persons and enable reasonable access to healthcare services without causing barriers, including financial barriers, and whereas a national universal pharmacare programme would enable all Canadians access to quality, safe and cost-effective medications, improve health outcomes and generate cost savings, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Kingston add its voice to the number of institutions calling for a national universal pharmacare programme by petitioning the Government of Canada and the province of Ontario to move forward with the development and implementation of a national universal pharmacare programme, and that this motion be shared with the Prime Minister of Canada, the federal opposition party leaders, the ministers and critics of finance Canada and of health Canada, the chief public health officer, the premier of Ontario, the provincial opposition party leaders, the provincial minister and critics of finance, and the chief medical officer of health. Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. This is a good idea. We have been missing this out since at least 1964, when it was first suggested. It is a good idea, and we should not be shying away from endorsing good ideas, especially when Kingston is particularly in a position to benefit from this. Canada as a whole needs this, but Kingston in particular, having hospitals here attracts people with perhaps chronic diseases or chronic conditions that require this. Our particular population has a slightly higher need for this. It is also a very good thing economically. We have heard that we could be saving up to $4 billion, or a minimum of $4 billion a year, by investing a mere 1.7 billion. Those are pretty good returns on our investment. That kind of investment can then, as has been suggested, be put back into finding other ways of improving our lives and our society. This is a good idea. It is not only a good idea, it is a timely idea. We are, if I may, call attention to how we have actually moved things like this before. Just recently, we passed a motion asking for a fentanyl abuse programme to be incorporated. This was pulled, or this was first initiated by a backbencher in a non-government party, and it appears that we may have had an influence, because that programme has now, has since been implemented. If I may also ask you to reconsider, or to consider that we passed a resolution on a basic income guarantee that has started a national conversation, and has now been, a pilot project has now been mentioned in the Ontario budget. These kind of motions have an influence. Earlier today, we just deferred a motion in which AMO has asked us to pass a motion endorsing one of their ideas. There's a reason for this, because we can actually make a difference. And if we can make a difference with a simple vote, if we believe that this is a good idea, then we should do it. We have been asked by members of our community to do this. And so I'm asking you all to consider how much better Canada can be, or what we can do by the simple act of voting in favour of this and having it passed, and then telling these people that we've mentioned, that this is something that the people would like, that it is good for us, it is good for the country, it is specifically good for Kingston, and I think its time is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Neil?
Yes, thank you. I think this is a wonderful motion and a great initiative. We, as the previous speaker pointed out, we've gone years talking about it. There are, there's only one other country in G8 that doesn't already do this, and I'd like to remind people that it actually will save money ultimately. It will save taxpayer dollars with health prevention, with improving health. It also will, for those of us, I was 28 years a teacher, Good Union, great health programme. We benefit here around the horseshoe, as do city employees, because we have an excellent pharmacare private programme that's funded by the municipality. School boards in municipalities will actually save money and save taxpayers' dollars if the federal government were to initiate this. It might initially mean additional income tax, but at far less a rate than what the private sector, health programmes charge employers. The groups that it will benefit most are the working poor, some of whom will in fact need to give up jobs in order to receive social assistance, in order to receive a drug plan. But even, even those working poor, middle-class people, farmers, self-employed, small business people, they're faced with really, really troublesome decisions when it comes to being able to fill a prescription in order to prevent illness or a condition. I am a type B diabetic, I probably, through the health plan, I probably save $1,400 or $1,500 a year is what it would cost me out of pocket. If I was working poor, there's no way that I could afford my medicine. And what this motion is asking the province and the federal government to do is recognise to apply a measure of equity for all Canadians, and it just makes perfect sense, because ultimately, it saves municipalities, it saves provincial and federal governments and school boards an enormous amount of money that we're now paying to, to private companies, and it will lead to better health outcomes. So I sincerely hope that, that people support this. It's logical, it's sensible, it would be really unfortunate if we weren't able to support this request of the federal and provincial governments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Camden?
Thank you, and through you. I guess just hearing the $4 billion in savings, it's a little bit over my head as a councillor, I'm certainly not in tune with this type of, type of thing. It kind of reminds me of a feeling I had the other day, I had a friend call me and say, "You have to buy this stock, trust me, it's the best, it's the best decision." And I'm not sure if it is or not, I really don't know truly if this is actually the best decision, because it is over my head. My gut feeling tells me it is the right thing to do, because I think that it helps out the people who are in the greatest amount of need. And I think that we can always do better, I think, and Camden, we have a, we have a good healthcare system, but we can always do better. From what I can, from what I've heard and the very tiny amount of information that I have on this, my gut feeling tells me that it just genuinely seems like the right thing to do, even though if it's, if it isn't, I really haven't, certainly not an expert on this, we don't have any reports on this type of thing. So it is something that I'm going to support, but in a little bit of a reluctant, nervous way, because I really don't know that much about it. And the slide that had the part about uninsured business owners almost caused me to have a heart attack, because I, I was surprised, people looking out for the best interests of business people, maybe, was a shocker to me, but I might have to take a picture of that and frame it. But I'm going to support this, because I think it seems like the right thing to do, but I certainly think we have very little knowledge on it.
Thank you. councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to emphasise the advantages to increased productivity that a programme like this brings. It's been said that universal healthcare saves about $1,000 per vehicle produced by car manufacturers. And I think, and the reason is, is because the car manufacturer in Canada is, doesn't have to pay as much in private insurance. The same would be true for a universal pharmacare programme. If it was, if it was done by society at large, then the manufacturer or the employer would not have to pay certain costs that they were paying now. The result would be increased competitiveness. And productivity and competitiveness are two things that are important to our national economy, or in this case, our provincial economy. So that's in, in addition to the savings which were predicted at 4.2 to 7.2 billion. And I would say that, as far as the municipality is concerned, other than the obvious savings to the municipality as a provider of drug services to its employees, we're also involved in a parallel situation with our homelessness initiative, and that is, the whole housing first programme is based on the idea that if you house people first, you will save tax dollars elsewhere. And already they saved, well, in healthcare, fewer visits, if people have a home and you can service them there, then, and they can help themselves, and they're not so deteriorated in health and psychological problems, then there are fewer visits to emergency, which is where the highest costs tend to be. Also, there's less policing costs, and also fewer social services costs. So the parallel is, social investments can result in productivity gains, and I think, and in better competitiveness, if you're well organised as a society to do that. and in better competitiveness, if you're well organized as a society to do that. Where is that most competitive country in the world generally rated? Finland, they've got all this stuff, including a top-notch education system, which draws in everybody. That's what pharmacare does. Universal pharmacare, like universal healthcare, draws everybody in, raises, raises all boats, as the saying goes, and therefore, your society is more productive and more competitive. So that's my argument for pharmacare. It's got economic, good results that come from it. And this has been shown a number of times, you saw the different times, '64, '97, 2003, or whatever it was, and now. That's, maybe the dates are getting closer together, because the, the weight of the idea is greater and greater. So I would ask people to vote for this. It's not only a good thing for individuals, it's a good thing for us as a community and a society. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote. New motion number one. New motion number two, moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by mayor Patterson. Whereas the City of Kingston has a policy and a program to address unsolicited funding requests, which do not clearly address waiving of fees for city facilities and properties. And whereas council has recently approved a limited number of requests to waive fees for the use of city facilities and properties. And whereas council would prefer to have clear guidelines or a program to address such requests, therefore be it resolved that council direct staff to complete research and report back to Administrative Policies Committee with options and recommendations on how to address requests for waiving of fees for the use of city facilities and properties. Councillor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So I believe the emotion is quite explanatory, and the whole idea of this is essentially to kind of come up with a set of guidelines that we can use going into the future, so we avoid the ad hoc approach that has sometimes been applied in the past. So that's the rationale for it. Essentially, you know, in speaking with staff and everything, there's, there's a few gaps in, in some of the policies and everything, and the idea is to kind of have a good comprehensive look at it, come back up through administrative policies, and hopefully have a good, clear policy at the end of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neil.
Just a quick procedural question, if I might. If, if this passes and a recommendation comes to council, I would assume it will come in the form of a bylaw establishing this policy. But like all of our bylaws, if there's a compelling reason why a future council wishes to support a project, it would just require two-thirds to waive that bylaw? Is that, am I reading this correctly?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Three and Mr. Mayor, so it would be actually in the form of a policy and not a bylaw. So we do have multiple policies that we use. One of them is, we have policies for grant programs. So it would be a policy, and council, of course, always has the ability to waive bylaws or policies if council wishes to do so.
And it would therefore just require a simple majority? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, we'll call the vote. And that carries. New motion number three, moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor McLaren. That council waive the rental fees of $875.50 for use of the Grand Theatre Regina Rose and Auditorium on Thursday, September 29, 2016, for the refugee sponsorship fundraiser show with proceeds to St. Paul, the Apostle Church Sanctuary Refugee Sponsorship Project, and that this be funded from the working fund reserve. Councillor Allen.
Just briefly, I'd like to make a quick friendly amendment. The date is actually Thursday, September 15, or September 15. If, and I believe my seconders are okay with that, if the will of council and the chair will allow us to.
So, so I think we can classify that as a...
Spelling error. Thanks.
So we'll just note that it's, whatever we want to call it, we'll just change that date. Councillor Allen, you have the floor.
Thank you. I, we've waived fees for a few things recently, and we've talked about opening doors to many other things. And I certainly didn't want this to come up as part of that, and then the previous motion showed up on the same agenda. But this was something that I thought that council needed to talk about. We were preparing for a large influx of refugees. We had plans in place to have a municipal support, community support around that influx, and we found out that our community was standing down for that. But that doesn't mean our community isn't accepting refugees. In fact, community groups are even more inspired to bring the dollars, the volunteer hours, and the spaces, and endless, endless hours of English lessons together to bring these new people to our country, to welcome them to our city as the best gateway to our country. And I think that that's just admirable. And I believe that they're not asking for all of the fees associated with the rental here, they're asking for a gesture, some sort of way that we can sponsor and show our, our support to this community initiative. And that's why I brought this forward. It took some listening and consideration about why this was important. And I think our council needs to decide, you know, through this and possibly through other ways, how we can support the community groups that are supporting these new citizens of our city, and ensure that they have the best, most welcoming, and most sustainable This approach seems to have a long-term effect of bringing more and more refugees to our city, and it's a small amount of money, less than anything else we've waived, but the gesture goes a long way, I think. So please support this motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognize you.
Thank you. One of the reasons why I was happy to second the previous motion is because we need to find a way that we can treat everybody as fairly and equally as possible. And without restating everything that I did at the last meeting, I get a lot of requests that are all great causes. Make no mistake, this is a great cause, but there are a lot of other great causes that I hear. And, and to councillor Allen's point, yes, there's no doubt that the Syrian refugee issue is close to the heart of our community, that there could very well be an opportunity for us to make a gesture in that direction. But I was at an event about a month ago on Syrian refugees, and there were many different local community groups that have raised funds and that are sponsoring Syrian refugees. So even if we took that subgroup, there are still many other groups that could be asking for something like this. So how do we level the playing field even within groups that are assisting Syrian refugees? I don't want to have to vote against this, but I think we have to consider the context of treating everybody fairly. And so what I would propose, I'm going to put forward a motion to defer this request until we see the results from new motion number two, that provides a framework where we could deal with a request like this, and understand how are we going to level this playing field, and how are we going to make sure that we're treating everybody fairly. So, so I have a motion to defer if the clerk has it ready to go there. And if there is a seconder. I think it's been seconded actually by the deputy mayor. So those are my comments. This would be a motion to defer until we hear back from the Administrative Policies Committee on a possible framework.
The motion to defer is on the floor. New motion three, to be deferred until such time that a recommendation on how to address requests for waiving fees for the use of the city facilities and properties is approved by council. To time and place, any questions? Councillor Neil.
Yes, a question as to time. And this may be a question to our arts and culture staff. I'm assuming that the suggested date of the 15th would be a dark day at the theater. I just want to ensure that there's a placeholder that will ensure that we don't end up recommending this in future after the report comes back, but there isn't an ability to, to actually do it. So, so is it that time sensitive? If staff could comment.
Through you, your worship, in answer to the question. I'm understanding that Mr. Gallagher has been in conversation with Diane Zemba, who's the Grand Theatre manager. That date has been identified, and a contract has been started to be developed that includes holding that date and outlining the kinds of costs that are involved. So at this point, it's my understanding that that booking is going ahead.
Thank you.
Any other questions to date or time? Okay, let's, we can vote on the motion, please. Thank you. And I give the chair back to you.
Thank you. So that is, for new motions, are there any notices of motion to present? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Clerk asks for minutes.
Moved by deputy mayor Turner, seconded by councillor Bohm, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2016-9, held Tuesday, March 1, 2016, be confirmed.
And that carries. We have some tabling of documents and some communications. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk will ask for bylaws.
There are five bylaw votes in total, and I'd like to note that bylaw three has been withdrawn as per the addendum, and bylaw eight has been added with respect to the motion to approve the councillors to the Heritage Kingston Committee. And I will ask that councillor McLaren step away due to his community interests, so we can vote on bylaw four first. So moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Hutchinson, that bylaw four be given its first and second reading.
Please vote.
Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Hutchinson, that bylaw four be given its third reading.
Please vote.
Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Hutchinson, that bylaws one and two, as well as bylaw seven and eight, be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. Still one person to vote. And that carries.
Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Hutchinson, that clause 11.34, bylaw number 2010-1, be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw eight three readings.
Please vote.
Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Hutchinson, that bylaws five through eight be given their third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor George. Still one person to vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.